Good evening, welcome to the study session of May 27. Donna, will you do a roll call, please?
Yep, I will. Councilmember Blush?
Here.
Councilmembers Sleren and Ser. Councilmember Gilmore?
Here.
Baron Esco?
Here.
Deputy Mayor Sherman?
Here.
Councilmember Sappis absent this evening. Councilmember Gutierrez?
Here.
Thank you, Donna.
You're welcome.
Thank you, everybody, for coming in. Just as a reminder, this is a study session. This is like an informal conversation between the council. There's no public comment tonight. This item has been already moved to a public hearing next Tuesday. So you'll have a chance to have comment then. So as we'll start, City Manager Mark Ziegler has information for the public camp.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor and the council. If you told me here, I will share my screen. Start with the written comments and questions I got from council over the past week. Go through those. We actually have another draft ordinance that city attorneys provided after some more research that may be some of the council's goals. Kathy and our city attorneys with us tonight as well to answer any questions and go through some of the more specific legal liability issues and questions that you might have as well. So I've got the questions up here. Would you like a hard copy as well? I can see if pass this around. Did they change from this weekend? Yes, there were some changes today.
Okay.
So there's some updates in there in red that say they have been on 5/20. I'll point those out as we test. Yeah, later this afternoon? Yep, exactly right. And Kathy, can you just check and make sure you can hear us there?
I can for them.
Okay.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can. I'll try to speak up. So Kathy, feel free to to jump in anytime if I need additional context or if I missed something here. Again, so eighteen questions, a couple two-parters. If you need some more information, feel free to feel free to ask, stand upon that, and I'll do my best with Kathy's assistance. So the first question was, what is the process enforcing this ordinance like? Again, this is based on the draft ordinance presented to council last week. So we took the kind of stance of what it looks like from the law enforcement side. So contact would start with either a call for service or proactive enforcement by PD. The individual will be contacted in person, advised of the public camping ordinance, and given the opportunity voluntarily leave at that point, and advised if they do not, they could be issued a citation or arrest. So that's how the initial contact would look. Question two, I'm sorry, I'll give you a second to ask any questions and follow up there if you like. Question two, when a camper is asked to voluntarily move, two-part question, if the individual complies, is the end of the interaction at that point, or if the individual is cited, what is the end of the interaction? So first, if the individual complies, it's more than likely they're given the amount of property that they have. Typically, the individual has some time, the officer would allow them to remove that property. They may come back and check. At that point, if they don't have much property, they could stick around and make sure the individual then vacates the public property at that point. Break, they break contact, check back later again, or re-encasing, depending on what the extent of the property they would have to remove or move themselves. And then B, if they're cited, what's the end of the interaction? If the person remains, then enforcement could take place, which could be a citation issued, and then they are released, or the officer could make a physical arrest and book the subject, the individual, into a correctional facility if that's so warranted. Question three, when ticketed, does a police officer then have the individual? When ticketed, sorry, does the police officer then leave the individual, continue camp? The answer is if the individual remained after the citation is issued and refused to leave, then a physical arrest could take place, or would take place. Four, once ticketed, what are the pathways to resolving the fine? So in Washington State, the imposition of monetary fines, sorry, I'll screen down so people can see it on the screen. Again, in Washington State, the imposition of monetary fines on indigent individuals. Sentencing is governed by RCW 10.01.160. The law states that no court may impose fines if a defendant is found to be indigent at the time of sentencing. This means that if a defendant can demonstrate that they are unable to pay the fines, fees, costs, and restitution, the court must not impose these charges. The court must also consider the defendant's ability to pay before imposing fines. If a fine is imposed, the individual has the right to work it off on the court's community service program with a credit of the current minimum wage per hour worked.
Functionally, this becomes an issue of community service or jail time?
Depending on the sentence, correct? We can't say what the sentence would be for the judge.
If it's a fine, we expect it's community service, and if they choose not to do community service, they end up in jail.
Five, since the fine is not stated by the citing officer, what is the minimum impact on the city to collect the fine? And does it require a judge and prosecutor time? The answer is if a fine is imposed at sentencing and the individual does not make does not make the monthly payments or do community service and leave the payments, then the fine will go to a collection after ninety days of no action. This involves time spent by the court for running reports for the collection process. It does not involve the judge or the prosecutor at that time. Six, if an individual states they are unable to pay the fine, does jail time result? Is there a fine to jail time standard formula? The answer is no. Non-payment of imposed court fines results in the fine being sent to a collection agency, not time in jail. If after ten years the fine is not collected by the collection agency, then the fine is written off. That's uncollectible. You'll see in question seven, there's some red text there that was updated today after I got some additional. So the question is, what are the costs associated with a standard hearing around this contraction? Based on averages essentially. So I took with our prosecuting attorney, our contract, our defense attorney, and then the average case count over the last, I think I used four years. So that average case count was five hundred and thirty-two cases annually. The municipal court budget is five, $753,000. If you divide that, pretty simple math, it's $1,415 per case. Prosecution at our ten dollars per contract would be $225 per case, and then public defense is $348 per case. So that'd be $1,888 per case as a general estimate of what it would cost to run a case in judicial process. Can I go back to number six for a second? Absolutely. Sorry about that.
Fine is imposed and it's not collected, what does that do to the budget? And maybe that's a question for Mike. Is that a negative debit that we don't collect?
Not necessarily. We, you know, we budget based on past fines collected through court. A portion of those fines are distributed to the state and then a portion remain in the city. So we would if an ordinance like this was passed, or any ordinance that would impose a fine in the citation, misdemeanor process, whatever that is, we'd be really very conservative on how to do that.
For example, the camping parks that we talked about, we impose a fine on that, but we don't collect it and it stays on the books. That's a negative debit to our to our budget, yes?
That's considered liability. We didn't necessarily budget the revenue, not knowing, not having any history and really knowing where, how much we collect. So we didn't budget the revenue necessarily for that.
But this is an increased liability on the books.
Financially, and it's not collected. Again, it's written off after ten years.
Yeah.
Any questions on seven estimated costs? I'm sorry, that's probably as good as we could do right now with the information we have available to us. Number eight. If a cited individual does not respond to the citation, how long roughly after citation would a warrant be issued? When a criminal citation is issued by an officer, the officer puts a hearing date and time on that citation. The first hearing is called the arraignment. Officers are instructed to set the arrangement date on a Monday afternoon within fifteen days of the issuance of the citation. If a person fails to appear at that arraignment, the judge has the option to reset the hearing and send out a notice to appear for the new court date or issue a warrant for the person's arrest. The municipal court arraignment are held on Monday afternoons, and all warrants are printed and signed by the judge on Thursday of the same week, sometimes earlier. Onto number nine, could the police continually cite an individual who does not move for multiple days? Would the city remove property under 8.74? No problem, or wouldn't wait for the matter to clear court? Technically, it's possible that continuing citations under that code, it's not specific in the draft code, could take place, but it's not really a reason, correct? How should it be considered in the code as utilized language that would authorize the city management to adopt administrative policies and procedures for implementation? That's in the new draft code, which I'll present to you after we get through this. The policies and procedures shall be guided by the city's interpretation of applicable state and federal law, reasonable deference to law enforcement's expertise, safety and dignity of those impacted and need to protect property in the city. This is an example that I'll talk about a little later, but it's been used in some success, including a recent, reasonable county.
Is that applied to the same location or if they just moved to another locations?
Any public property.
Any public property.
If an individual moved from one public property to the other, and they didn't, they didn't move, essentially, they didn't negate that, they could be cited.
So they can, they just move from park to park to park or to just outside of town, they can be cited or just inside of town on city property. So I'm just saying that you can just rack up a bunch of tickets, whatever, if you just move.
Could.
Okay.
I'm telling the question, I'm stating, please.
Oh, I think that is going to be a potential obstacle to really enforcing this is if people are asked to move along and they comply superficially, meaning they take themselves and their belongings, and they move, you know, three, four, five blocks away and set up camp again, then I think the city needs to figure out, you know, as a matter of policy, how to deal with a situation like that. Because I would anticipate that occurring.
Again, it's probably about intent and expectations, said by council for the record, Captain Sappis. Yeah. Okay, number ten. The belief that we open ourselves to significant liability, but want to remove the clause when, quote, "When such camping is in violation of this chapter," unquote, from my perspective, waiting until the judge finalizes the case and then acting with this clause in place is preferable. And that was the the previous language that in eight, seven, four, oh, four, oh, remove personal property at the time of citation. Not necessarily when the, if the person was booked or removed for booking. So we can, the city can remove personal property that blocks a path of travel, currently abandoned, presents an immediate risk to public health and safety. You can also remove it by giving advanced notice and an opportunity for the person to move the property, except for obvious garbage, which we have to, except for obvious garbage, we have to store usable property to allow it to be reclaimed. Again, the policies and procedures as demonstrated by Shoreline and Spokane that is in the draft ordinance would address some of those, some of those ways and means that we could do more specifically guide our staff on how those practices would take place for personal property.
Sorry, Mark. There's a couple of separate questions here, separate but related. The second paragraph talks about what the protocol is for the police and the court to deal with personal property incident to someone's arrest. I think that's a separate question from the city's authority to clear encampments. So if people are camped in parks on the public right-of-way in a manner that is a real harm to the public health, welfare, and safety, or if the property is clearly abandoned, then I think the city has pretty broad authority to remove it regardless of whether a person has been arrested. Another way that property can be removed is just by giving sufficient advanced notice and an opportunity for the person to clear the property. And again, that's regardless of whether someone has been arrested. I don't know, Mark, did you forward them the Spokane policy on encampment removal?
I have not yet, no.
Okay. Spokane is a really great policy that details all of this and specifically instructs staff on how to go about removing personal property in a manner that protects, the public protects the staff and also tries to ensure that the city is not violating rights to protection against search and seizure or the right to due process, which are both constitutional rights that are at issue when you're removing people's property.
I have another question. A lot of these folks have pets, and if they're arrested, where do the pets go?
Particularly with the, we'll take it in the animal, if the animal shelter is full, where do the pets go? I don't know if we run into that, to tell you the truth, if I can answer that tonight.
Oh, okay. I'm just saying that's another, that's another point of property. I know that someone had six cats. We couldn't let her inside the shelter before it was closed. You know, because she had six cats, but she would take one cat inside and let other folks outside take care of the other five cats. But I don't know, I'm just talking about how this is not just going to affect our human population, pet population as well, and our animal control shelter is full most of the time.
Yeah, and that's something we can address in the policy as far as just getting a protocol for what to do with pets. Whether the city has the practical ability to deal with the pets, I think is another question.
What's the cost per night to house a pet at the at the shelter? That's another.
I believe our impound fee at shelters is $30 per day.
I guess I'm trying to raise permanent and the abandoned. That is to be on the not working. At one point, can we consider it permanent and forty-eight hours?
Kathy, do we have, yeah, Kathy, do we have the leeway in the protocol to define permanently abandoned?
Yeah, definitely. We can definitely do that, and we can definitely set a timeframe for giving notice. I've seen everything from twenty-four hours to seventy-two hours advanced notice that is required to be given to the people who are camping before the property can be removed. So there's all kinds of details that we can adapt, you know, based on the city's unique circumstances and also your practical ability to handle enforcement.
Yes. Okay. So down to eleven, and Kathleen, that certainly has a better understanding. The question is, has council been consulted about potential litigation risks?
Yeah, I mean, I can walk you through that history. So the existing ordinance, when we wrote it, it was really kind of a placeholder, if you will, because at the time there was the Martin v. Boise case that was enforced that essentially said we can't enforce it unless we can prove that there's no, or that there is available shelter and someone refused to take it, which we were rarely, if ever, going to be able to establish. So it was very bare bones when we wrote it, thinking that realistically there wasn't an avenue for enforcement. Now that it's going to be more realistic to enforce, I think we really have to start thinking about how we do it. Because there are really two types of lawsuits that could be filed. One is a challenge just to the ordinance itself in all cases, regardless of how it's implemented. And that was the Martin v. Boise case, which held that Boise's ordinance was flatly unconstitutional in all circumstances. We're at less risk of that now after the Supreme Court overruled that Boise case. So what I think we're more at risk of now is what's called a facial challenge, or I'm sorry, an as-applied challenge, meaning that it's a case specific. So someone, if someone specific, if their property is taken, if they're arrested, if they have some other contact with city officials that they feel has harmed them in some way, then they could file a lawsuit just based on how they were treated. So because of that, we really need to be careful how we enforce it, make sure that we're keeping really good records, and make sure that we have really tight policies.
I guess I have a follow-up to that. If I remember, with Johnson v. Grant's Pass, it seems like Grant Pass has pretty robust homeless services, like they do have a low-barrier shelter and those sorts of options. I could be wrong on that, but my concern is that we no longer do. And does that materially change our situation to where this could be reasonably challenged? And could we mitigate that risk by designating an area where we don't enforce this? Which could also be a place for services, obviously. That's a big step, but would it help?
Yeah, Grants, that's exactly what Grants Pass did after the decision came down, was they revised their ordinance and they established parts of the city that were safe areas for people to camp. People who were homeless to establish camp. And then determined that all other areas of the public parks, rights of way were off limits to camping. It was a great idea. Unfortunately, there was a lawsuit filed immediately over it, finding that the designated camping areas were not navigable or usable by people with disabilities. So, you know, no good deed goes unpunished, as you might say. So that's definitely something to think about is if you were to establish official areas where camping is allowed, then just making sure facilities are actually usable by people who might have disabilities. The other possibility is to determine that camping is only off limits in certain areas of town, for example, the downtown area. And then everywhere else in the city, we're not going to enforce. I think the issue there is that can be a tough policy call for the council because people who live in neighborhoods where camping isn't prohibited, you know, might raise objections.
Question twelve. Spoke to other jurisdictions and similar ordinances in place. We can confirm they're actively enforcing them, and there are case studies that's in our region with these sorts of ordinances. If so, are those communities a similar size? I didn't have time to do much research or reach out to communities. By the time we got these questions, we did look a little bit at some cities I know amended their ordinance after the Grants Pass decision. Buryan, Aberdeen, and Spokane are three of them. Lakewood is another one that's addressed this. Addressed, councilmember Gilmore questioned him last time. These communities all have some type of services or shelter litigation attached them, whether it's, whether it's city run or city sponsored or supported by the city, I'm not sure, but there are some services there. So you'll see some of those, as well as there's links within this document to MRSCs, some articles in MRSC that I think are really worth reading about camping revisited after that Supreme Court made their decision and then regulation of unauthorized camping lawyering and solicitation of aid. The MRSC does a good job of covering the legal opinion and some of the realities that communities are facing out there.
Yeah, and I think one reality, and someone alluded that, I couldn't see who was speaking, but someone alluded to that a moment ago, that you know, the Grants Pass decision said that you don't have to confirm whether shelters.
Everyone's, you locked up there, Kathy, and I don't know if you can hear me. It doesn't like your back. There you go. Hey, we lost you for about twenty seconds there.
Oh, okay. Oh, hang on.
Back to the Grants Pass decision.
Yeah. So I think you have to ask the question, do you still want to try to establish whether there is some, there are some services available before you enforce in certain cases, even though you don't have to? Because if someone makes an as-applied challenge to how their specific case was handled, if you can show that officers or city officials tried to get them help, you're going to be in a better position to defend that. I understand that you don't have much, if any, shelter space anymore, but it's certainly worth a discussion as to what options there might be.
Okay, down to thirteen. So the question is, this language seems to remove several reasonable and non-hindering requirements of law enforcement before they can cite an individual. Most notably, it seems that a citation can be issued without providing an individual the opportunity to move on. We no longer require law enforcement officers to provide access to services or transportation in any circumstance. The removal of these items does not seem consistent with the goal of decreasing camping on public lands. I understand that we are no longer prohibited from citing individuals when there is not ready access to a shelter, but it seems it should still be our practice to always work to find ways for best fit. One answer is implementation of the ordinance is much more detailed than what may be captured within that draft ordinance at the time. Particularly, we're still facing state and federal laws that are being challenged and could be changing at any one time. Again, I'll go back to the recommendation in the new draft ordinance is that a policy and procedure so we're specifically specifically itemized and detail how it will go with each and every case of somebody's property.
Yeah, and if you look at sample ordinances from other cities, they're generally pretty short, and they don't have a ton of detail. And I think that is exactly what Mark just mentioned, that there's a lot of complexity here. This is a very quickly changing landscape as more and more lawsuits get filed and decided by the courts. So if the city manager designee are giving the authority to work out policies that can be adapted as things change, and the city council remains as sort of the broad decision-maker on the policy, I think we'll be in a better position to make sure that our enforcement of our ordinance is, you know, appropriate and adapts to the city's conditions.
I think consistency and the protection of our city staff is really important at the same time, right? You need to be able to consistently implement a practice that takes away what could be deemed, you know, discretionary, if you will, that they have a procedure to follow, and they follow that consistently each and every time. Fourteen. So this again asks about examples of cities that have changed their camping ordinance. So again, Spokane, Aberdeen, and Buryan have done that since the Johnson versus Grants Pass decision. And again, there's links in the, up above to those code sections for those cities. Fifteen asks about cost comparison for arrests and incarceration versus cleanups, overdose response, and police interactions that are currently taking place near the Brewer Park area to address concerns a budget some council members may have. If you have the ability to compare the costs, and so I compared some of the costs for, and asked for costs of a mitigation side or permanent supportive housing in comparison to the arrest incarceration, the cleanups, homeless management costs that the city currently is experiencing. So one thing the PD has done is started tracking approximate hours just based on contacts for homeless individuals. So this month, to date is forty-four hours. And that Uh, to date is 44 hours. That isn't just necessarily Brewer Park, it might be throughout the city. Our Public Works and Parks have accounted for 121 hours a year to date, so that's from January 1 to, to today. Um, as far as recent cleanups, um, usually at Brewer Park, um, a couple staff people, a truck and a trailer. Um, I've listed off the um. Some of the costs for dump fees there, not necessarily the staff, um, because I'll address that. Uh, down below, but on 512, we had a dump fee of 3112, on 48, we had a dump fee of 9257. On two other dates, um, back in uh, March. Uh, we removed some debris that was collected uh, out Highway 3 near the train tracks that was delivered down to city property at, near the parking lot and. You'll see there, one was 14129, and one was 9744. Um, the city is currently providing two portable restrooms downtown, there's one in Brewer Park, and there's one over here. At the parking lot, 425 Coda, right next door. Um, Brewer Park is 215 a month and $95 a month. Over here at the parking lot, that's because we have additional services, um, that thing is served uh, twice a week. Uh, next at Brewer Park, and then 300 gallon garbage cans at uh, at Brewer Park at about $230 a month. Uh, my experience, I wasn't able to do a whole lot of research on mitigation sites. I did visit the Hope Village down in Longview, Washington. Oh, back in the end of 23, right? Councilmember Sherman, yeah, so uh, back at the end of 23, it is a 50 uh, person pallet shelter site. That was constructed and managed by the city of Longview. Um, they have 50 pallet shelters, shower facilities, laundry facilities, case management on site, security. It was a little over a million dollars to put a site in, fencing, utilities, the pallet shelters, and, and all the infrastructure needed. They contracted the Salvation Army, million.
Million four.
Million four per year, I think, contracted Salvation Army to, to provide the case management, security, and management of the site itself. As well, so that's kind of my frame of reference right now of mitigation site. Um, there's many shapes and sizes to mitigation sites from designated areas where they have essentially what you might consider tent cities or. Um, tiny home villages that are intended to be mitigation sites, or even, you know, hotels that are purchased in some communities, but I don't have a lot of information on that today, so. Um, happy to dig into what the council chooses, um. So to date, those 121 hours of the parks and um. Public Works staff has spent with the, including the cost for the restrooms and the dump fees, a, a total just over $6,000. Um, in our homeless response so far, year to date.
Can I ask about the designated crisis responder? How many hours does that person put in? And what would the impact be if we needed another designated crisis responder? Or, or three to cover, you know, in a 24 hour period, I don't. Um, but if that might be a different option. That increase the release enforcement, if we can get more DCRs.
So there, we currently have the one DCR, as you know, and it's a 40 hour uh, work week that they're in town, um. In my experience in talking with, with PD and, and Chief Co Stat is, is. There's a, there's a fine line between, you know, between somebody um, being um, being determined uh. Incompetent, I guess, I don't know, the legal term or the medical term, as in somebody that, that, that you can involuntarily commit to one that. You know, they might just go through uh, de-escalation or crisis response and get the person stabilized. Um, and again, that's, that's something that's, that's out of my uh, out of my wheelhouse.
Funded, not through the city though, correct?
Correct, it is grant funded through Thurston Mason.
Get more DCRs that might mitigate some of the impacts on the homeless population? Or, or limit our liability as a city? I'm, question mark, question.
Yeah, um, I'm not sure, uh, you know, if somebody is. I know our DCR is not, is not a co-responder that is working on ground ground services and providing housing. Um, services or anything like that at this point. We, we had scheduled a um. A study session with uh, North Mason Regional Fires Co-Responder Program, they're going to get integrated public health services and they do some of that. And that's an opportunity that we could look at and I do want to look at in a future study session. Um, that provides that peer support, medical and mental health um, support at the same time. And it's a uh, good use of the opioid settlement funds that we have. We currently have sitting there waiting, waiting for a service, so I do want to bring that to council. Um, with North Mason staff, North Mason Fire, Regional Fire staff to better um, inform the council on that opportunity. Okay. Sorry, did?
Yeah, I just wanted to know.
Okay.
The financial impact, if, could DCRs be an alternative to? Um, putting our folks in liability and confronting. People who are probably going to be angry that they're going to be moved, so. Um, and I don't want to have another situation that happened a few years ago where, where we were sued and had a big, big liability, so.
Certainly, DCR is a great source to be implemented, you know, by, by our police department or missions to get, I know they'll. They'll champion the benefits of having the DCR embedded within the department anytime you ask them.
People here who don't know what word DCR means, designated crisis responder.
Yes, yes, thank you so much. So again, a contracted service uh, between uh, Thurston Mason Beho, the health organization, um, they actually receive a hundred thousand dollar grant. It funds the DCR that's placed within the city limits, and it's the only DCR in the county that, the county sheriff has some co-responder programs, but they're not. DCR, which is higher, higher, higher trained, higher credentialed uh, individual. It's the only person in Washington State that can, can convince somebody, can involuntarily commit.
And is it correct that a lot of communities don't even have a DCR?
Boy, um, I'm not sure, I know there's some in Olympia because we've had to reach out to some support there when we didn't have the embedded DCR here. Yeah, yeah, we shared DCR with first encounter, and the issue was somebody was in crisis on railroad. By the time they drove down here from Olympia, they're sitting on the bench, DCR goes, well, it looked fine to me, going back to Olympia, so then AWC, I think. Previous city manager, Knight, applied for a grant from AWC, which started the DCR program, and now we're kind of just rolling with it with the. The BHO? The BHO.
T-BH.
Keith, Thurston Mason Behavioral Organization, yeah. Exactly. Um, I'll move on to 16 here, and I'll probably pass this off to Kathleen because um, it, it's, the question's associated with uh. Civil rights violations, um, and specifically what makes this a violation of rights and where legal liability lies. Um, considering um, how allowing public camping may violate the rights of residents and business owners in any way. And if this is um, potentially a civil rights violation from others besides the unhoused population, so they may be neighboring. Or um, or experiencing the impacts that.
Yeah, I mean, just briefly, I think we've already touched on the fact that a person who is subject to enforcement under this. Could have um, constitutional claims depending on how. The encounter went with law enforcement, whether their property was taken, all sorts of other factors. Um, the new twist in this question is whether. There could be liability for not enforcing the ordinance, for example. Um, members of the public or business owners who. Um, are affected by homelessness and homeless people camping, you know, in their neighborhoods or outside their businesses. And the answer to that is no, um, there is a doctrine called the public duty doctrine. That protects the city against liability for most policy decisions that apply to the general public. So for example, we have an ordinance here that is designed to protect. The general public health, welfare, and safety. And it's not intended to protect any particular specific individuals or class of individuals. Therefore, no one can sue for a failure to enforce it. One of the exceptions to the public duty doctrine is called the special relationship exception. And that means that there could be liability if someone were to go to, say, a property owner and say. I promise we will take care of this. Property owner relied on that promise. Um, the assistance didn't materialize, and then the property owner suffered some specific harm, not just the harm of. Of um, having, you know, adjacent homeless people, but some very specific harm. Then there could potentially be an argument for a special relationship. Um, but that is usually applied to first responder cases, police, fire, and 911. I've actually never seen it applied in a context outside of that, so that's a very unlikely scenario. But knowing that, I think everyone should just be careful not to make any promises. Other than to state that the ordinance will be enforced to the best of the city's ability.
And there, I'll move on. Effectively, the last question, it um, asks what are state laws around public camping and homelessness, um. No state rights add to federally granted rights, and often state constitutional rights are deeper and more defined, so pass it off to Kathleen as well.
Yeah, I mean, the short answer is, most of the time. The courts are going to find that the Washington Constitution is more protective of individual rights than the US Constitution is. Most of the time, not always, but most of the time. And the state constitution has the same rights in it, so there's. We have a Washington version of search and seizure, due process, cruel and unusual punishment. Um, so even though the Grants Pass decision was decided based on the US Constitution, it didn't answer the question. About the Washington Constitution, so challenges are still possible. Um, just last week, May 15th, so pretty hot off the press. There was a opinion that came out of the King County Superior Court on the city of Burien's camping ban, um. King County had sued Burien because they couldn't agree on whether Burien's ordinance was constitutional or not, and. King County Sheriff's Office was providing services to the city of Burien and. Was therefore going to be in charge of doing the enforcement. Um, and it was a very lengthy opinion, um, that is, it's pretty compelling. Um, that upheld Burien's ordinance against a very. Long list of constitutional challenges under the US and the Washington constitutions. Um, and Burien's ordinance is really very simple, um, it's not detailed really at all. But the city was able to make a really good record that it had been doing, you know. Pretty compassionate and thoughtful enforcement. Um, and not just, you know, rounding up homeless people by the truckload. Um, without trying to assess whether there was somewhere, somewhere else for them to go and get services, to at least make that attempt. And that did go a long way with persuading the court that the ordinance and how Burien was enforcing it were constitutional.
Burien did have a low barrier shelter, yes?
Well, that was, and that was part of the, part of the issue, there was public camping, but I believe King County operates. A low barrier shelter within, and that was one, one of the arguments within the case, is whether the shelter had to be um. Located within the city limits, and that, and that was part of the ruling, correction if I'm wrong Kathleen, is that. That, that wasn't reasonable, particularly when, when there's an opportunity just outside the city, city limits or within close proximity.
Yeah, the judge made the, I think, the valid point that if we're going to require. Every city, even the smallest city, to have its own. Facilities, then we're going to discourage regional cooperation, which is really going to be needed to help solve this problem. Um, one additional note about laws that apply here, the Washington law against discrimination is a statute, it's not constitution. It's not in the constitution, but it can be very much in play here, again, if it could be shown that. The law isn't enforced equally without regard to protected characteristics such as. Um, race, national origin, disability, um, sex, gender, whatever other characteristics may apply.
But a local shelter not inside the city would incentivize or disincentivize someone to pick services?
No, the point that the court made was that cities and counties should be encouraged to cooperate with each other. To try to develop regional solutions for homelessness. And if we were to require every single city to have their own, rather than allowing. A city to say, okay, well, there's a shelter in the next city over, can't we use that? Then that would discourage this regional approach.
There's no other shelter in Mason County, correct?
As far as, oh, there's no other emergency shelter for, for single adults.
Yeah.
That wrapped up the questions that submitted to me.
I have um, prepared some thoughts, and I would like to read them, I worked really hard on it. And I'm just hoping that you will give me the respect to get through it and feel free to uh, discuss it after I get through it. All right. So regarding ordinance number 1977 dash 0921. In 2024, the US Supreme Court ruled that local ordinances have the authority to impose criminal penalties on those who camp in public spaces. Currently, our public parks sign outline these rules, including the provision of overnight camping. Yet we have chosen to ignore many of our own policies, but why? Some argue that enforcing these rules is cool. But is it cruel to find a driver who is speeding 50 miles per hour in a 25 mile per hour school zone? Most would say no, because that's a matter of safety. So how is enforcing rules in our parks and our sidewalks and our public spaces any different? Allowing individuals to camp in public space is unsafe for them. It's not fair to those people living in parks. There might be a porta potty present, but that doesn't ensure hygiene. A tent might provide shelter, but that doesn't protect them from the elements. And other people might be around, but they're not always safe for people to be around. During a city council meeting on May 20th, Morgan Hodgson shared disturbing incidents, one involving a woman running down the street screaming. And another reported assault. If these individuals had accessed the services provided by Washington State, they wouldn't have been exposed to these dangers. Washington State has invested over $13 billion to combat homelessness. Funded by our tax dollars, our contribution. From every individual who lives and works here, we've already paid this. Our local community offers numerous resources, including, here's just a few, I'll just list a couple. Crossroads Housing, it's a family emergency shelter and offers rental assistance. Turning Point Domestic Violence Shelter, shelter and support for those fleeing domestic abuse. Proactive Supporting Housing, assistance for chronically homeless individuals with mental health and substance abuse diagnosis. Guest Enemy Ministries, they give recovery housing and life skills training. Love Eat, there could be clothing, household items, and hiding essentials. Youth Connection and Hosts, services and housing for homeless youth ages 12 to 24. Best and Habitat for Humanity, education and housing accessibility programs to all. Public transfer, public transit and para-transit, it's free transportation and medical ride assistance. Behavioral health and recovery programs, mental health, the substance abuse treatment, and crisis intervention. And multiple food banks, providing essential nourishment, and many other programs I just named about one third that I found. With all these already funded services, why are we not directing people towards services? I have some firsthand experiences with community outreach. For months, I went to Brewer Park. At 6:00 AM every Tuesday and Thursday morning, no matter the weather, even in the darkness, to offer services to the individuals living there. I partnered with Crossroads Housing, actually, I was there with them. I partnered with Crossroads Housing, actually, I was there with them. It wasn't me, it was them. And Youth Connections, and City Cleanup Crews, and Local Law Enforcement. We provided coffee and encouraged residents to seek the available services, many of which I just mentioned. We have personally got to know forty to fifty of the people who live there on and off. And guess how many of them offered, that we offered the services to, accepted them? Right, not a single person said yes. They declined assistance, but they eagerly took cigarettes and asked for money and sometimes even asked for drugs. We continued this effort for months with no personal gain, simply hoping to make a positive impact. Instead of gratitude, we were met with hostility. We were spat on, we were screamed at, we had objects thrown at us, but why? Because we wanted something better for them. There is a reality here, homeless population. I have spoken to many unhoused individuals. And when I ask them where they're from, the, the most responsible they get are Thurston County, Kitsap County, Grace Harbor, Seattle, and even Portland. And so when I ask how they got here, many will say they took the fruit bus here, while others will say they were dropped off. When I ask why Shelton, their answers are always, A, because your community has a lot of services, and B, because you leave us alone here. I want to be a place of the hand up, not a handout. I don't want Shelton to be the handout community. I want it to be the hand up community, one that leads people to support and the solution, rather than enabling a cycle of street living. The resources exist, the funding exists, the help exists. But if we fail to enforce our rules, we fail those who need the change. Yeah, it's a burden on our community. It's unfair to the residents of Shelton. Not only do we pay for the services to support public safety, but we're also left to clean up the messes. We fund emergency services that respond to the overdose call. We pay police officers to maintain that safety, and we call them on a regular basis. And yet I personally got attacked just opening the doors of my business downtown. How is that fair to any of the businesses in our downtown community? There is an impact on the local businesses here, and it's real. Let's consider the absence family who purchased and restored a old building um, right across the street from the park downtown. They poured years of time and effort, probably a lot of money, into making it the nicest I've ever seen it, and I've lived here my entire life. I was born here, so I've seen that building's transformation, and it's beautiful. And yet, the individuals in the park have now vandalized it, they've broken the windows, they have spray painted it, and leaving the owners to shoulder the burden of having to clean it up while the perpetrators really have no consequence. Just this week, I had to remove graffiti of my building, which is not even a full block away. The decline of our downtown is irrelevant. When vagrants run through the streets screaming at intersection passersbyers, people feel unsafe shopping downtown, and the businesses suffer. I personally know many entrepreneurs who have tried to run businesses downtown, but here we're ultimately driven out by local issues here. And customers are afraid to exit their vehicle. Grandparents hesitate to walk into the stores or even go into the post office. Parents fear harassment when they're pushing their children in strollers down the sidewalk. Yep, there is a condition at Brewer Park. While we're preparing here for Forest Fest, one of the community's most cherished events, here we are. In years past, families brought chairs to Brewer Park to enjoy the parade. But looking at the park today, there is no way it could be safe for families this weekend. And how is this empathy? And for whom? The community's concerns seem to be directed toward those who are destroying our town, yet not towards those who are working tirelessly to improve it. We cater to those who are vandalizing our property, who harass pedestrians, who pollute our street. But where, where is the concern for the hardworking people of downtown Shelton? We're a community unreceived right now. And if I didn't already live and love in this town and I were just passing through, I saw the homeless encampment on Highway three in Brewer Park, wouldn't stop there. I wouldn't even stop for gas. I would just keep driving. For those who are living in encampments in Shelton, if you go up to them and ask them if they love Shelton, they're going to tell you no. They don't love it here, but they do love how easy it is to get drugs. They do love how the community gives them free stuff, and they do love how low the accountability here is for that. So basically, we're just being too nice, and it's helping no way. The good people of Shelton are being abused. We're paying for the services. We're volunteering, we're donating, only to knock the plan of death from us for the very items that we gave them to make it easier for them. And the drug use is a reality too. In last week's meeting, someone stated that those living in the park gather here for safety, and in my opinion, that's not always true. Overdosing on drugs isn't safe. The local employees are dispatched to the park multiple times a week to resuscitate overdose victims. I see the park from my window and I see it every week, sometimes multiple times in one day. So by allowing the large congregation there or in other places, we are actually making it easier for the drug dealers to find the people to tell them to. They know exactly where to go. I've watched drug deals go down. You're not helping that. There's a, a role here for our law enforcement. A former attorney in this area once told me, not so long ago, jail is the most terrible place in the world. And I strongly disagree with this. Jail is safer than the streets. It provides shelter from the elements, meals are provided, there are guards and safety measures, medication is administered to those who need it, and most importantly, it's an opportunity for those people who need it to get sober. It's a free detox. I know so many people who have actually turned their lives around after going to jail. And they credit jails for their transformation. How can that be such a terrible thing? The only ones who seem to really oppose it are the ones who want to continue this work path. These are costs we can't ignore. Some argue that incarceration is expensive. All right, let's talk about costs. Let's talk about how seventy percent of the aid calls usually go to overdose, if you're in our community, most of them are in a couple block radius. Grass cleanup is costing our city thousands, which we had just talked about. Also labor and dump fees, porta potties that we're paying for, they're being vandalized, they've been lit on fire, they've been locked up for personal use, and even used as sites of assault. The graffiti cleanup demands the time and the resources from the city staff and private citizens. And the lost tax revenue occurs when consumers choose to spend their money and shop elsewhere and not spend it in our community where we very much need the tax funds, because they're a part of the downtown growing problem here. So I would rather my tax dollars go to fund solutions and not enable destruction. I would rather fund jail time if it means real rehabilitation, real sobriety, and real change. So every week that we're in here, I hear, we hear from the people who are advocating for the unhoused, and that's wonderful. But I am here to advocate for the citizens of Shelton, those who are left cleaning it up, that business owners that are struggling, and the families that are now afraid to walk downtown. It's time for our city council and to prioritize the majority of our communities and not just a select few. Thank you.
Thank you.
Here.
That's a nice narrative, but it's not exactly true. It's forty nine percent true, maybe. Um, I've asked a lot of the council members to sit with me at the Canadian Lifeline Building and see the amount of destruction that society has caused from these people. I have asked, um, I've asked several times that we think about cruelty and what it means to be human, what it means to be a Christian, and what it means to keep the door open and keep the light on for people to have a place to go, to have a safe harbor from the housed people who are abusing the unhoused people. And I think that was the point of Morgan's statement, was how abusive the whole society had been towards these folks. And I believe that it's not a problem for, it's a huge problem here, yes, it's, but compared to other cities, it's way less. I actually feel safe walking down the streets through the homeless shelter. On Sunday, I made meals at the Community Lifeline Kitchen. Community Lifeline is still open for case management and for a hand up. But we, we are no longer open for housing people at night when it's dangerous. And a lot of people are taking credit for closing the shelter because of the toxicity that's on Shelton Talks, and private money has dried up. And we are no longer to, to keep the doors open, although we have a few grants for case management, for a, a meal, for um, showers, or laundry service. Um, there are human things, there are Christian things, there are just humanistic things that we can do. There are solutions that we have that don't include excluding everyone from their right to make a mistake and then come back from that mistake. And come back from that mistake again. And it's not like baseball, it's not like one, two, three strikes around. It's like, how many times have you, have you fall down and how many times will you get back up? And we need to not just do housing first, but we need connections first. And if we keep abusing people who have already been abused, then the cycle will continue. And homelessness will not be solved by the city of Shelton. Homelessness will not be solved by all the different programs or the money, but homelessness will be solved when we look at ourselves and look at others and say, I decided to love today, I decided to love myself today, and that we as a community decide to love everybody today. And I don't think that the solutions that Councilmember Sherman has put up is very loving, kind, generous, or holistically looking at the whole problem. This is a huge problem that is beyond what Shelton can do by ourselves. And we do need to have Basin County, the state of Washington, the United States of America, stand up for the rights of people who have, who are economic refugees. I know that at Community Lifeline Shelter, we were, people were dumped at our doorstep because that was their last known locate, location, and they could not get services at the decent general. They were shipped to Harborview, and then they were dumped on the doorstep with their last known residence, which is the Lifeline. And every night was triage. We opened up the shelter, people came in and said, oh, thank God, I can get my diabetes feet taken care of, I can, I can wipe away the blood, I can go somewhere where I can rehabilitate for a second and then face the cruel world tomorrow. But at least that night, they were safe. And I take my friend's daughter to go there and serve meals, and she says, wow, and she's not afraid of the folks at the park. And I don't leave her unsupervised, I don't leave, people should not leave kids unsupervised, don't be unsupervised, but I'm just saying that her solution, she would go, went outside and asked people on the street, go, do you have a safe place to be tonight? It should be that simple. Do you have a safe place to be tonight? Consider yourself, are you well fed or are you housed? And are you thinking about thinking, well, that's not, that's good for me, but not for anyone else? But I believe that we are not doing enough, and that there's toxicity out, especially on the internet, about who these people are. We had various testimonies saying that all, all these folks are drug addicts. These are people that have different things, economic bankruptcies, medical bankruptcies, and then if you sell your house because you had no health insurance, then you become at a higher level, and then now you don't, you don't get any services. So this is a trap that the economic system has imposed upon us, and that we are not looking at holistic solutions, and we're looking at just smearing stuff to the side and not actually finding real solutions. We are just fluffing something and then it's going to pop up somewhere else. And I asked this community to think better, think outside the box, and think about living together in community, because that's why we have cities. Is because we decided that it was safer to live together in community. And if we stop living in community, things bad will happen. I wanted to refer to back in the past, we had something called the Bonus Army. That was when veterans were released on the streets. And they just wanted to know where, we were promised a certain amount of money for the sacrifices we made for our country, and they were denied those. And they went on the streets and they were voted over by our military, their own military brother. And something like that in the near future may or may not happen. And I'm asking us as a society that we can do better, we should do better, and we should find solutions and not put um, negative consequences on folks who do not have the resources or the connections or the trust of, of the society because they've been let down. And we can do more and we can do better. Thank you for the time.
Thank you. Sure, I'll end real quick. I, I just want to thank the council for agreeing to have this meeting. It wasn't on the schedule. Um, one of the last thing, I appreciate the conversation. I know I've learned a lot. Um, and Mark and Kathleen, thanks for taking the time to answer these questions and all, all the staff that I'm sure got involved. I know that it was an undertaking and it was super helpful. Uh, it is a super hard issue, and I know there's a lot of, a lot of uh, some big feelings on every side because everybody's impacted by homelessness, whether you're homeless or you have to interact with it if you have a business downtown. Those are all major concerns. And it's, it's hard to find the right way forward. I know I, I do think the hope of this is to chase people until they leave. Um, but it's a legitimate concern to not want people right next to your business, or not want people where everybody who drives through town is going to see the, the hardest part of the community. I, I think we need to continue forward with a conversation about where people can go if they can't go anywhere. So where can be a place that's safe for people to go in camp that is not going to make people in downtown feel like they can't stop and shop? What can we do to meet somewhere in the middle that isn't just saying, no tents anywhere, best of luck to you, hopefully somewhere else?
The last couple of weeks, I've had a concerned father, his daughter was getting ready to start working at a shop right near mine. Came over to talk to me and make sure that I was going to be there on Sunday between eight and two, because he wanted his daughter to be able to call me in case there was anything crazy that was going on down there. She's not the only person downtown who relies on me to be there a lot of different days. There's a lot of older senior women who work downtown who ripped off time and time again. Um, that's on social media too, all the people downtown who have shoplifted from them, windows broken, um, people peeing behind their store, people just coming in there and acting critical, you know, defenseless, you know, as, as they look at us, defenseless women, and that people just go in there and take advantage of them. Um, there's a lot of shops downtown that have that. There's a lot of old mom and pop kind of shops that are here that, you know, they might open at certain hours because they know what's going to happen down here. Um, those are the people that I start to listen to. You know, I, I, I've tried, I've done a lot to try and help the other side of people who are running on hard times around here, and I, I need quite a bit to help them. Um, more and more, it's coming to where they want to come into our shops and restaurants and eat things and walk out and not pay for it. And these are a problem that is just getting to grow, lady, and it's becoming more and more of an issue, not just for me, but for the other people around me. Uh, someone hopped in my cook's car the other day, grabbed the pickaxe out of his backseat, walked in my shop, put it on the counter. So it was my, uh, my cook figured out there's another guy who's down on his luck, and he's, uh, shop was pointing at him going, hey, that's your pickaxe. So uh, we wrestled the pickaxe away from the guy and got the police to come back there and arrest him. And then a couple of days later, this last Sunday, he walked up and sat down in front of my shop again and shared it. So we had this guy arrested for stealing from our car, almost assaulted one of my guys. Yeah, he's out in front of our shop again, three days later, he was sold. These are the concerns that I'm worried about, you know what I mean? We can, they have, hey, no, we got a pickaxe, it's not that big of a deal for me and my friends, but the little old lady next door in the flower shop, they're definitely not built for that. The little ladies, women at each shop next to me, they're definitely not built for any of that. And I'm really concerned about them. And, and the little girl who works at the store across the street who's dad wanted me to make sure that she's okay there every Sunday morning. That's real worry.
Thank you.
There are little old ladies at the shelter before it was closed down. So it's not just about this type of person versus that type of person. And I think we've had a lot of testimony saying that it's not, a homeless person has a name, a homeless person has a story, and a homeless person has a lot more than just someone's ideology of what a homeless person is. It could be anybody. It could be yourself. It could be someone who got sick one too many times. It could be somebody, that veteran who was not necessarily discharged honorably, who does not get services. Um, it could be a lot of things. And it's, um, there are people from all walks of life who are out there on the streets for whatever reason. And it's not just this idea of And it's not just this idea of a dangerous person who has mental health issues. That's not the whole population of the homeless population.
I don't think that we are saying.
Nobody's saying anything like that.
No, and in fact, in the past week, I've helped two people um get them to have any services. And neither of them had what I could see as mental disabilities, but one of them was widowed and one of them was fleeing domestic violence. Neither of them were on drugs. They just had some hard times and that. We all had hard times. So I directed to CrossFit and Trust of Us working with them because we have those resources available. We could have picked up their resources that are going to be available. And so we're willing to accept them.
There, don't forget.
I actually just wanted to say Deputy Mayor Sherman, uh, she talked about folks that uh were offered services and refused. I just want to share that I lost a family member earlier this year to homelessness and substance abuse uh because his city chose not to arrest. And I strongly believe that if he had been arrested and seen a judge, he would have been put in the correct treatment program and he would be alive today, but he's not because he was not arrested. Was not held accountable. So I would like to ask, what is the cost of a life? And I would like to say for those who are refusing services, I don't want to enable self harm.
Thank you. Any other questions about that? Move on to the ordinance.
Time you guys are.
You guys ready for the ordinance, please?
Do you want to see the, the draft sent? I got kicked off Zoom and you need to, do I need to join back in? Uh, do you have it? It's in the um briefing folder.
Okay, um. So I'll, I'll have Kathleen weigh in on this a little bit too after doing some more research and we mentioned Barry in quite a few times tonight and. I believe this is kind of um. Taking a, oh, thank you. Up on the screen. Yes, thanks, Mike. Taking um. A cue from, from what Barry did, we mentioned. Inventoryation section. So you'll see under eight point seven four oh one oh, the findings and legislative purposes. Again, just gives us um. Some background on, on the intent of such code. Eight point seven four oh three oh, the penalty adds um some language. There you go. Yep. Sorry. Um, add, add some more language um specifically to address one of the concerns about. How law enforcement would approach an individual um that is camping on public property and. I'll just read the last, you'll see in blue down there at the bottom. If a law enforcement. Uh, officer has offered re, if law enforcement has offered resources to a person camping on public property. And that person accepts the offer or agrees to relocate off of the property, charges. Yeah, charges may be subject to criminal deferral. To the degree permitted by law, fines and or penalties may be waived in the course reasonable judgment upon a showing of need.
Yeah, that's missing. Should say if a law enforcement officer. So we can add that.
Yeah. And then eight point seven four oh five oh at the bottom. Excuse me, I'll go to eight seven four oh four oh. Um, it, it removed the language. It said personal property be stored for six days following notice the owner. Um, and this may be reclaimed within sixty days as a uh. As a alternate language um that, this is something that would be outlined within a policy and procedure. Because we're most likely not going to have police officers, right? Take that property and the personal property, categorize it, inventory it and store it in, in the middle of the night. Right? It's just not something we want our police officers to do, but we want to outline how that's going to be addressed. So it's, it's, it's addressed consistently each and every time. Uh, we've done this in the past a couple of times before we've inventoried managed property for the um, the um. Sixty days, um, and somebody frustrated and let them know where the, where the property was and it wasn't picked up and it's disposed of at that time. Uh, again, eight point seven four oh five oh would designate city manager um or designated to develop the policies governing the enforcement of this ordinance. Um, be consistent with constitutional legal parameters. Uh, policies shall, shall include procedures for the removal of personal property associated with camping. Um, ordinance shall not be enforced until policies have been developed and finalized. Again, I, I apologize, I did not forward the shoreline and the um Spokane uh policies to you, but I think. Really comprehensive and I can do that this evening. So you can use those. I think they're comprehensive enough that would allow the council a better idea of how such um. Such action would be taken by city staff in the event that uh somebody was, was addressed uh. Property. Anything else to add, Kathleen?
No, I don't think so. I mean, uh, if the council. Did decide to move forward, obviously we would have meetings with. Law enforcement, city manager, legal, probably loop in the prosecutor in the court as well. Um, any staff person who would be involved in the enforcement of this to make sure that. The policies are comprehensive and that they're enforceable. Um, and that everyone's on the same page. I think it's going to be very, very important, especially for law enforcement to have. Really strict guidelines of how to go about doing this and to follow them consistently every time.
The only changes marked to this is the eight seven four zero five zero where we're going to let you write a policy and then uh their belongings as well.
That's a, that's a substantive change, right? So eight seven four oh one oh is new language in blue.
Yeah.
Page one. The findings and legislative purpose. The page two, eight seven four. Oh, three oh as proposed, the blue language, the strikeout eight seven four oh three oh, the old language was, was stricken. From the other draft that you saw last week. So that's, that's not a change. That's in the existing code now. The references. Um, the need for city staff to ensure their shelter space available prior to enforcement. And then again, um, as you'll see on the third page, eight seven four oh four oh's. Uh, struck the last, the last sentence, added within sixty days at the end there and then the blue, the blue language at eight seven four oh five oh is in addition to what you saw last week.
The rest of it was written down.
Correct.
Okay, so we need to go back and get that set up before then. Because that shouldn't take that long. We complain on this already a week. So another week and then uh. There's your time to get that finalized and then it will go into effect five days after, once we sign it, it's a law next week, right?
No, we, then two weeks after the next week, it's three weeks from today because we're going to have a public hearing next Tuesday.
Yeah, it should be in effect after that five days.
Now it's public hearing, then the following meeting is an action item.
So that was what we had.
I believe that's.
Five days after next week.
We voted to move it to a public hearing.
Yeah, next week and then that was it. Then it's official. It's not action yet.
Action was, was three weeks from today. So, I mean.
So we're adding another touch to this. That wasn't what I was, that wasn't the way it was explained to us last week. That wasn't my understanding at all. So this needs to be implemented here last week, never mind a month from now. So we're not adding another review to this. So this needs to be enforced effective after next Tuesday when this is started. That needs to be removed.
My suggestion then George would be next, next week that you make a motion to, to move it forward that day then.
Okay, that's.
So because it's already, we already have a, we already have a, a public hearing. We don't have an action item already scheduled. So you'll make an action item next Tuesday. Via motion, correct?
If this ordinance should not be enforced, the policy will be filed. Policy needs to be enforced right now. And I understand if things need to be developed as we go. If we're going to add another six months onto, that's an order this year, what do we have?
Well, I don't think this, yeah, the intent is in six months. I'm not so sure that we can develop it with all the parties often, but.
So why was this brought up last week before we had a study section? Why is this something that's coming forward now? I see this as something that was snuck in on the last piece. That sounds kind of odd to me.
Oh, we're not, no, I'm not sneaking anything in. This is an option. This is an option presented by council as, as opposed to what was brought to you last week. This is just for council consideration.
I'm, in my understanding, eight seven four zero five zero is just. For you and the attorney and the police to set up a policy to make sure we're doing everything properly.
That, that's the intent. So, so there's consistency within, within the police department, city staff. To make sure that we are protecting our city staff and we're protecting the individuals that this enforcement may occur on, correct?
Yeah, that's probably accurate.
Well, the, the issue with, so if, if I can explain that more, you, you'll see the, the. The ordinance is, is very short and not very detailed and.
That's what we just had. That's what she just said here, not twenty minutes ago. Was that Baryon came up with a very short ordinance at work and it went into fine. So why do we need to add more to ours?
Oh, no, Baryon has the policy uh as recommended here as well.
Yeah, Baryon.
Sorry for that confusion, yeah. So the language in eight seven four oh five oh is language Baryon used as well that, that developed the policy procedure. Sorry for that.
All this, after we're done here next week, nothing is going to take place for how long? If it goes the way we're trying to do it right now. If we just put this on for another hearing next week, which is a.
It's a public hearing.
Public hearing, okay. After the public hearing next week, how much longer before this rule would take effect?
Um, I will do my best to have a policies and procedure. Draft form, um. Let me, let me look at, let me look at Spokane's and uh, and, and Baryon's more closely. I, I think I can get something by, by Monday that's in a draft form if it's just based on their. On their policies.
Well, it would be a um. It would be an administrative policy. So, Mark, if that helps, it would, we'd be able to.
Yeah.
A little bit faster if it was a city manager policy adopted, you know, in conjunction with the police department. And, you know, not being brought to the council for decision necessarily. We could certainly bring it to you for information. Um, but I think that could speed things up if it's um policies that are decided at the staff level.
Kathleen, was I correct on, um, so this has already been moved to. Do a public hearing next Tuesday and then the following meeting was, was going to be the act line. Am I correct that George can make a motion? Next week to make it active or to vote for next week instead of the following meeting?
Yeah, there could be a motion to suspend your rules. And if it's seconded, then yeah, you can move ahead.
Yeah, the uh, the ordinance, the ordinance require five days after, after action taken. Obviously, we could have a policy done by.
Excuse me, Mark. Usually it's five days after publication. What does that say? I.
Yeah, it's publication.
And publication is part.
Thank you.
Sorry.
Which, which publication is?
Publication in the jour, in the journal.
So in the, in the uh paper of record.
That's law.
Days after Thursday.
Well, if we could get it, what's their deadline? Monday at five?
So if this is passed by council at our next meeting, which is June third. It would be published in the journal on June twelfth. So it would go into effect. June seventeenth, June eighteenth.
So why couldn't we get it in the journal next week?
You can't.
The action hasn't been taken.
On Monday night.
We can't have a meeting.
We have to have a meeting.
Yeah, yeah, take action by council, yeah. So if the council take the changes to the, to the ordinance that. Since it's administrative, it's not going to stop anything from moving forward. That's what you're looking for, right?
Yeah, I'm, I'm, I'm interested in feedback there. Again, again, what do you tend to, I'll get you the beer and um. Draft uh procedures.
All right. So any other questions for city manager?
I have a question for the PD. It's okay. Um, of all the forty-four hours of proximity in May for homeless response throughout the city. Um, out of those calls, um. How many do you think are in um active abuse and addiction versus uh mental health or, or other issues happening?
For, so we started those, this, this, this starting May one current. Um, since May one. Including four, the homes that we responded to group art. We responded to the city here and we started to move out by calls since May one. Um. We have those for overdose, for overdoses, homeless, yeah. Um, and maybe disturbances, one including two-hooding weapons, one specifically handgun, one assault. And the rest of the calls are suspicious calls, working violations. Uh, you want to.
Any other questions?
Was it deterred that any of the graffiti was done by the homeless or was that just an assertion?
They were feeding on the building I've run in and it's. We have an investigation, yes. Second gas station, I may know I was potentially homeless person.
All right, I'm new discussion. Just want to see if we can start working on maybe some age restricting um some of the kratom and some of the. Legal substances that gas stations sell today that. Get too high and some people actually will OD on some of this stuff as well. So. I'd like to be the first maybe in the state to start tackling. These. Supplements that. Cause great harm. We've got mushrooms powder now on gas stations that. Melt your face and with this, kids are inhaling.
Does um. Does um.
I worry about twelve-year-olds also buying stuff at gas stations. So.
That's what's walking through the park.
Well, you're entitled to that. I'm, I'm, you're entitled to that. I'm asking if we can start looking at age restricting. In the city limits and may hopefully the county as well, supplements that get kids high. That makes them pass out. Um, we all saw the presentation. It's pretty scary. I mean, if you don't think it's scary, then. But I mean, that's, let's tackle it. Let's tackle that. We, we, I've seen this, I've seen the presentation like four or five times now and it's, it's pretty scary. So.
Sure. Does Mr. Holbrook have any?
There's no cities in Washington yet that have done it. There are multiple cities across the country that have banned a lot of this stuff and there are about eight or nine states that have banned it. Um, you know, I'm hoping that it can be the state, the state will get involved in the FDA. I mean, the FDA has. Kratom is a drug of concern, so, but it's still legal by, so. I don't, I don't know where we start, but.
Stores are supposed to be selling that to underage minors.
Yeah, it's not illegal. They do, some of the items do say don't sell under twenty-one, but that's not the law. That's just, that's just a manufacturer um code on there. There's, it's all legal. So. That's, that's all I have.
Excuse me, Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
Was there a motion to change our procedure for this ordinance or?
We have no motion. We're in a study session, but I think we're, we just okay. Um, the city manager to go ahead and make the few changes that were in here.
Yeah, we'll, 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 we'll bring back this draft ordinance um for the public hearing next week.
All right, anything else? All right. Basically turned at seven twenty-nine PM.